The meeting is called to order, but I'm gonna do something a little different just today because we've changed location. And before we get into the actual meeting, I'd like to get the planning board's opinion on this coloring of drawings. Mark, you had me uncoloring? Remember I talked about when I wanted to pass, about coloring your drawings to make it easier to read? And I think I ought to color it too, to experience.
It's hard to find, right?
I think I was trying to colorize.
It's conceptic kind of.
Picasso told me how to draw. So that's the other thing, that's hoping. I think I might have colored it.
And you didn't even stick it in the drawing because we're the only ones here.
No, no, that's okay.
It's a lot easier for you now.
We're gonna make them mic.
Oh, they'll make them mic. Is it helpful, you mic them too much or?
I think it's helpful.
It's a microphone? Yeah, I think that's good. These are easy. No.
I don't think you can get easier.
Well, see, they just so many overlap.
We still, this is the official one, this is just for the purpose of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Really, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think you can get it.
Do you like it? Makes dudes jump out at you.
I would suggest, I would suggest to you, because you're the ones doing it, that you do make them like. Well, oh, I recognize what you're guessing.
So, these are permanent structures after all.
Yeah. We're blue, water feature, I'm trying to stay, blue water features, green, vegetation. And we're living in another country. Okay, sorry.
I mean, definitely compared to that, you know.
Okay. You may get a chance to get here. Okay, now it's not with favor. The role call members? Bob Gilbert, member.
Terry Wake, member.
Ray Kachaski, member.
Wendy Brown, the board president.
Harry Wilk, chairman. Bill Lawson, executive.
Okay, and we'll see Wendy for Nancy and Harry for Kathy. So if I were full seven. Review and acceptance of the minutes.
Uh, Ray, excuse me, you said a full seven?
Yeah, we have seven.
Six.
Six, we count six.
Uh-oh.
Because Cindy isn't here.
Sorry, stand corrected, because we have six.
Okay.
Review and acceptance of the minutes of June 12th.
I have something on page four. Under committee reports. Just where, there are four sentences in there looking at August 23rd survey responses. That was kind of, we're talking about a public meeting on August 22nd, so I'd suggest something more like there. Looking at scheduling a public meeting on August 22nd to increase the next, responses for the next survey, something along that line.
Does Sharon make things, are you taking notes today?
Yeah, I'm the director.
I have a number of suggestions, I think, about the wetland report, if you can clarify. On page two. When Cindy could not go on private properties, aerial photos would take him. I don't think that's the case. I, I think when Cindy could not go on private properties, existing aerial photos were utilized. I think you're more accurate. Lower down, a town can rate their wetland systems based on their own data. I think we need to add preferences. Page three. The homeowner could question and request an onsite planner. I'm not sure planner is the right word.
Where's that in there? How far down the page?
Uh, the second paragraph. Where the board asked about the accuracy for everyone mapping. The homeowner could question or request an onsite evaluation. Professional evaluation. Fourth paragraph down. The wetlands system refers to the connectivity, the net of many wetlands. I think I might word it differently. The wetlands system is, refers to a drainage system. And within which there, there are areas that are not themselves wetlands. The last paragraph on that page, on page three. The board asked whether or not we have prime wetlands. Uh, there's a, the next sentence I don't quite get, about half the land owned is not wetlands. I don't understand what that is. Does anybody read?
I don't know if it was referred to.
I wrote, so I'm suggesting we strike that.
Strike that.
Was it, excuse me, what we suggested saying?
Was that half referring to, what was it? Excuse me, what was it that?
The, the board, planning board asked whether or not we have prime wetlands. I think the answer to that was, we do not have prime wetlands as defined by DES. But we can define our own prime wetlands that we consider significant.
I had something on sheet, on page four, two thirds of the way down. Paragraph that begins the area between the tennis center and the academy building. Third line, BBTS missed the May 31st deadline for their temporary plans. I think that should read, BBTS missed the May 31st deadline for the rail box site plan. I think it was that rail box or box rail. Should get it correct.
Box and rail.
Box and rail, please, a site plan. Just to clarify that that's what it is that they're submitting. That's all here.
That's it.
That's it. Oh, one other thing. On page five, actually the last paragraph, or the paragraph just about adjournment. The box with the property owner, with the property owner along Five Mile Bridge, that's a separate subject than the sledding hill and the, the different subjects underprivileged before have been identified with bullets. And so I think that should be also identified with bullets. It is different than the preceding thing. No, that's it.
Any other changes? Have a motion?
Minutes be accepted as amended.
On paper?
Aye.
Minutes. Next done and done there is the site plan review for BBTS for the proposed box and rail line. Just give a little history of this and Bill will jump in if I say anything wrong. Because I don't know if everybody's aware of the history of this box here. I believe in 2012, the selectmen approved the rail and I think a trampoline system for a year, right? A temporary approval?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know what, they were done at the same time or not, right?
But somewhere in that time period.
In 2013 is the rail, or 2014 earlier.
But yes, they were.
Somewhere in that time period. And then last year, the selectmen re-approved it for another year.
Right, allowed an extension.
With the condition that if they wanted to.
Beyond that.
They wanted to be on it, they had to come to the site plan review. The deadline for that was May 31st. And that didn't happen. And the selectmen granted another 120 day extension so that they had time to come to the planning board. For the site plan review. So I just want to bring everybody up to speed on how we got where we are today. Because you can look out there and see these two structures, which is unusual. And I want to thank you for hosting us.
I do.
So originally, we got the application in June. And what was submitted was the same drawings for the, the training facility. And Terry and I looked at the drawings and said, well, we really need something specific for the rail system and the trampoline. And this is what was submitted yesterday. I'm a little confused because what was noted was for the box and rail line, but not the trampoline. Is the trampoline gonna remain?
So, so speaking specifically of the trampoline, that was intended to be not a permanent fixture on the property. And when we were able to acquire some trampolines, and it was, I think it's three years ago, with the Chris Hodges. Said we have this tramp, so we have the ground decking, mount looking with foundation and then can we do this? And that, we went right for town. This is what they said we did. They said we had to go through the site plan approval. Because we didn't really know exactly if it's going to be a permanent fixture or not. Currently where that stands is, you know, we have two tramps in the training center that we're using. As going forward, we'd like to have more tramps, outdoor tramps like it is now. I'm not sure we're gonna do that this year, so just for cost reasons. And I think we're able to accommodate what we're doing inside right now. So I was hesitant to have that discussion perfectly set there. And I still think it's a removable thing, and I don't know how we want to treat that or not. And I'm, I'm a little nervous that it's gonna be there forever, or not forever, but because it could come for adjustment. But I'm not, I don't have specific details of our, our future with that site exactly. We want to do outdoor tramps. We haven't done a complete analysis. We don't have the tramps to put in there right now. We don't have the money to improve that decking, which needs to be done, because so we're probably gonna, we're probably gonna take it down. That could change, and I'd like to come back to you guys and say, hey, you know, we are gonna do something with the tramp. So I think it's, it is a separate item, even though it would be nice to roll it into this, we just don't have all the answers for it. I don't mean to be ambiguous about it. That's kind of how it is right now, and that's, that's on us, so.
It sounds like as far as the planning board is concerned, the trampoline is off the table. And it's up to the selectmen to decide what should be done about the structure there.
Yeah, well, that's how I interpret what they just said, that you're not sure what your plans are. And at some point in time in the future, if you do want to put the trampoline back in, you're gonna come back to the planning board and, and get permission to do that.
Correct.
Okay.
Or it's left, whatever, whatever cost it was.
Yeah, I'm assuming that they're gonna encourage you to take down the existing structure. If you're not gonna use it, because it becomes a nuisance.
Okay. Just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't think that. We still, you know, we just actually had our budget passed last night. You know, looking at the funding and other projects we have going on, and it's, you know, we gotta look at other things that we're doing. And that's really not the focus right now, so.
Okay, I'll clarify that.
So are we clear that it's, it's temporarily staying up or coming down, or?
I, I would, they're not going to use it, is my interpretation. And, and I would strongly recommend that, that you take down what's out there now. You know, and primarily because it's gonna become a nuisance issue. I mean, if somebody giant climbs on that, jumps on that, I mean, they're gonna use it, we want to remove it.
Yeah, I understand that part of it. So you're, you're not planning on using this outside?
Not right, not in the immediate plans. I do have a contractor looking at it and looking at redecking it and getting a cost and getting an estimate and getting some drawings. So again, if I had that to present to you guys, I would show it to you, but I don't have any of that. And it, that could come in the next month. And maybe I'll be in here in August, if you have an August meeting, and saying, hey, we are gonna do this tramp. This is where it's gonna go. You know, I just wanna, we haven't vetted out that process with my building committee. And I just want to make sure that that's where we think it should be, is the best place, and this is how it should look. I am not happy with the way it looks. I'm not really, I don't think it's a great site. I don't think we've done a great job with it, so I'd like to kind of clean it up and do it right. Again, I have, actually, you know, I kind of misspoke. I do have a tramp frame in the training center. So I do have one extra tramp that I could use. Again, I think we're servicing our population fine, what we have inside. It's controlled, it looks nice, it's safe. So once we go, we're gonna go back outside and try to do some outdoor tramps, which we want to do. We want to roll those programs. We, you know, it's gotta be a better plan, and I don't, I just don't feel we have a good plan right this second, so.
Yeah, okay, as far as we're concerned, yeah, tramp is off the table.
Can I ask, can we just for future reference? What, what do the selectmen, how do they determine what a temporary structure is? Is that something that's like?
Because so many come to this and walk. As, you know, I'm gonna give you the example, when they started with the jump ramp down in the, in the pond. Initially, we're gonna erect this, we'll take it down at the end of the summer, and we just wanted to see if this will kind of work. That's our definition of temporary. Once you use, it's there, if it's there for more than a year, then we automatically jump to, you know, any temporary. You gotta go to the planning board. If it's covered by the regulations, then, and get it approved.
So it's a time basis, 12, 12 months plus makes it a permanent.
Generally, and also if there's a foundation or some other permanent part of the structure, they've treated it as.
Yeah.
And these trampolines have been here three years?
Three years.
Well, they did, they, they have gotten approval. We gave them approval, then we extended it a year.
For the trampolines?
Oh, yeah, yeah, for both of them.
Okay, so now we're gonna do the box and rail system.
One thing, and we'll move off the tramp, but one of the discussions is, you know, digging a hole and making the tramps ground level. So you don't even see that whole thing, and then creating a perimeter, you know, for safety, and then covering it up so people can't be jumping on. So I still think we might look at that instead of this thing that comes out of the ground like it is and it's raised. So that's why I'm hesitant to say, you know, this is what we should permit and ask for with you guys. But I don't, I don't know what, if that's the best thing would we govern that.
Yeah.
This whole structure came up with some guy who was selling it down in Asheville and had tramps and had the decking. Like, oh, this is great, you know, we need that. And so we got the town involved, and so.
To be determined.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, now that gets us to the drawing. So the original drawing that was submitted was the same drawings for the training facility. And as I said, Terry and I looked at it and we said, that's not gonna, not gonna meet our requirements.
Can I get a clarification on this, the next submitted, you just came in a couple days ago, was one sheet. Is that now the entire package with this application? And those other plans are no longer?
Yes.
Because the results of Terry, Terry and I's review, when it first came in, we, he asked for a specific drawing, which, which we received here. We asked for a legal statement stating that no changes to existing easements should be in. And also a statement from the municipal service department attesting to availability of services, which I don't think we received.
I don't know if it, was it just the plan, or was it more?
What were the other things? I'm sorry, legal statement?
Yes, stating that no changes to existing easements. And also a statement attesting to availability of services.
Availability of services, and that would be electric utilities, right? Definition here of services, right?
Let me find that one, just so we'll read it exactly.
Hang on, Terry's looking it up.
We can comment on these things, but I, obviously we didn't submit anything in writing on it, so that would have to be post-meeting.
Did you get the, did you get the email? You must have got the email.
I was, I've been in Austria for, sorry, for the last two weeks, so I didn't see an email. I mean, other than I knew that we had our engineer redraw these drawings with the training center, I mean, with the rail box setup. You know, did the dimensions, tried to do everything. Again, this venue is, was a temporary, it is a temporary venue in some ways, because it has no foundation, so, I mean. I didn't see that, so obviously.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. I mean, I can get it to you for sure, and I can speak to those questions, knowing just the history of what's there.
I don't think there's any issues involved. I think it's just a matter of getting the statement, because it's a part of the requirement, that's all.
And that holds up approval for this meeting, that's a, I mean, we do have some time, given what the selectmen did with the whole thing. You know, I, I understand that you may not pass this today. It'd be nice. But if there's obviously things we need to do, you know, we will obviously do them. And I apologize for not getting you what you, what you requested. I didn't see that, and I don't know.
For your reference, it's in the legal section of the site plan view, numbers three and five A. Those are the two.
And looking at the, looking at the drawings, there's no profile of the jump itself. There's no elevation that shows how high it is, and which is something that we really wanted.
Okay.
And there's no contours on this, which. If we actually go right down the requirements, we needed a, a drawing of the whole lot with the boundaries. This, this is cut off. The contours are missing. The zones, I didn't see the zones.
Well, I think that they were on the original set of plans. This is why I asked the question. Because I think a lot of that information is actually in the original set of plans that was submitted.
Yeah.
That could be supplemental to this.
That's what we were thinking, and also along the line of the easement, all the original easements are included, and you know, there's no.
There is a lot of information on the, on the original set. This helps, this addition helps because it puts existing out of function, puts the proposed in function, which makes it much clearer and so forth. But without that set of plans, now you're missing a lot of the information you're referring to on that set of plans. So I think that there could be some sort of combination of those plans and this plan. I don't think you need the details on the building that was built prior to that. I think that's worthless, doesn't really apply to this. But if you're coming in with a site plan, this really is a separate site plan than for the building. Because you're going for a specific thing, as the title would say, the box rail. So I think that even though it had been submitted at one time for another site plan, because this is a different site plan. I think you'd need all that information again, but I think you have it. It's just that it has to be included in the package, that's all.
So we're gonna try to kind of combine the two?
I would think that someone would have to sit down and go through, go through the application, because it refers to the plans a lot. And where the application refers to a plan.
Just say refer to page sheet four.
And put the package together. You probably would need three or four sheets from that other plan to go along with this, to make a full package. But then the other stuff, I don't think is necessary.
Do you need us to get those, those renamed? Because I know one of the issues.
It really should, yeah, to be, to this specific application.
And Terry, the reason for is these get filed, right?
Yes.
Reason, yeah.
So each application has a file.
It's a separate package, right.
Separate package that contains all the information about that.
So if someone, some future date had a question on the rail box. They would take this package out, and they could review it, and they could see what the planning board reviewed, and what your comments were, and how it was put together. Be satisfied that it was looked at as one project.
It's a record for the time of what was approved.
Right.
Actual, set conditions.
We can do that. We can do the profile also, with the, you want a profile, and a top on that also?
Well, contours.
Probably your contours are wrong, or a lot of the.
Unless, unless they've been changed for, or if you're just built on top of the contour. Then if, if there's a contour on that, a plan in there, and I believe there is, then that would be part of the package.
So as long as that's noted as a box rail setup or a box rail line?
Correct, we put it in this package, then we can refer to that as contours. But I still think that perhaps Mike has requested be more detailed necessarily, because it's planned view and so forth. But it's, it's really hard to tell. If you couldn't go out there and physically see it, it would be difficult to tell from just the plan view, you know, what it was. If you had a profile through it, it would show the slopes.
Yeah, some more of the construction drawings in some ways.
Particularly what it is.
So that's, I think that's, you know, I apologize. That we, and this is, this venue is, came upon us in a very strange way. And, you know, I didn't really understand what the coaches really wanted at the first part. And it became something of a, it's a little bit of an albatross, to be honest with you guys. So we're trying to catch up with, with doing it obviously correctly, making it safe for the athletes. We're using it appropriate for the athletes, and then getting it permitted correctly. Because again, it really was a temporary site, and there's no foundation out there, you know, we have to take it down. We could take it down tomorrow. But it's something that we want, we want to use, and I think it adds to what we're doing here in the property for our, our programming and our camps. But, so that's why we, it's not like when we build this building, or build the training center, or, you know, future buildings where we have, you know, a contractor, and we have all these trucks. So it's a little bit, and I apologize for, we'll disorganize that.
Well, we can understand that, but you also have to look at our point of view. And part of the planning board's responsibility is to prevent exactly that type of creep. You know, where something starts out and grows into something that no one really expected. Almost requires that there be some sort of planning or something like that.
I agree. I'm not disagreeing at all. It's, this is, it's on us, and I'm just saying, I do apologize. It's not how we usually operate. And then, you know, we've done the jump, we've done this building, we've done the training center. We're pretty comprehensive with doing a great planning process. Again, this venue has crept up a little bit on your organization, and how it, how it was presented, and how it was actually built. So I guess to the planning board, whatever you guys need to feel comfortable with what's going on up there, we will, we will provide. And, and hopefully we can find a good common ground with, with that venue.
Yeah, I think, I think a site plan doesn't preclude change. It just means that the change should be looked at ahead of time, prior to it actually happening.
It looked like they actually put some, built up the ground into a slope, so I think the contours might be changing. I looked at the side of the jump, it looks like.
We can have the engineer come up and look at it. I think we're gonna need to do that at the end of the day. I mean, what had happened, to be frank and honest with everybody, is that, you know, we had some staff measure it out and then send it to the engineer. And he, you know, he did all the work with the property and trains. So, you know, obviously we need to do a more thorough site review. And, you know, which is gonna include some measurements of the actual structure.
Yeah.
And you guys need to, obviously, you, you should have that, and it should be with the ground, and we should all look at it, so.
And we did give the engineer every, like, how far off the ground it is, so, you know.
If, if the ground was altered from.
I don't think it was, Terry. I, I, again, I was in Austria last year when he put this together, so.
It may not have been.
This is why I have a little bit of.
But you were talking about putting the contours on. All, all I'm asking is that if you find that the, the ground was changed, that you take that existing. you find that the, the ground was changed, that you take that existing contour plan that you had for the original site plan for the building and so forth, and just as you have it there, have the contours out of function, and the new contours that were done for the box rail only be put in function or direct, that's all I'm asking. It may not be that you need that, but if you do, that way we can tell that it was indeed changed for that.
Yeah, so if we had some sheets from this to supplement this sheet, it would be...
I think most of the information is there.
Yeah, I think it's, it's there.
The only other thing that I didn't find, and whether it's applicable or not, I don't know, but it is in the, in the application, and that is a statement by the engineer suitable, that the site is suitable for development, is something that they put on all the site plan applications, and so it probably wouldn't hurt to put it on here. That's under...
Suitable for what was the last word here?
Suitable for development, I believe is how it reads, it's in, it's in the site plan regulation, I'll see if I can figure it out for you.
And I know the DHB has the site plan rights too, so...
Okay, so they could look at it, plus the fact I'm sure it's on the original set, so it could just be duplicated on here, rather than me read the whole thing, well, okay, here it is. It's under the existing proposed site conditions, and it says, the statement, "A statement by a qualified engineer of conditions of land as to suitability for development."
And when you have these sheets, make sure that the drawings are just all numbered with sheet one, one, two, three, so that they all tie together, and...
Right, I have two questions.
Okay, one more thing, is a place for signatures, because the chairman and the secretary will sign off, do we just have a stamp that goes on the drawings, or should it be part of the draw?
It needs to be part of the drawing, where you physically sign a my line.
Well, not, my line is not...
Or not for site plan, sorry, yes, I'm sorry, yes, a set of plans that you physically sign.
Oh, yeah, we have an approval on here, and I think it should be at the chairman and the secretary also, the secretary sign.
Turn on the first sheet of that other application.
So what should we have, so we have to tell someone to do something different? I'm confused about what...
We need to place this sign...
Are we talking about this one here?
I'm not sure what the line is.
Okay, so the major one, you need another line that says secretary?
Secretary, yeah.
Okay, indeed. Okay, so that's on the front page.
So that they all tie together.
Okay, no, please, it's great.
Anything else that's really missing, Terry?
I think that that would get it to the point of acceptance, as far as the application.
Yeah. Because this says approximate, if you want to pick that up. Oh, Mark, I'm sorry, you had two things.
Yeah, two questions, you said you wanted a utilities letter?
Yes.
What, what utilities would be involved with this?
Well, that site is going to, is going to be open to, not to public, but to classes and use by several individuals, so I'm sure there's gonna be need for use of a toilet and for drinking water.
Okay.
Now, though, granted, it'd be used in the building here, but it would be, I would think, a statement that says there's going to be toilet facilities and water available.
But that wouldn't come from you, you were talking about having Jim provide that, why, I mean, he can't certify the use of their bathrooms and water?
Let me read it and then you can...
Okay.
It's under the legal, under paragraph three, "If a site is to be served by public water supply or by public sewers, a statement from the municipal services department attesting to availability of such service, please attach to application."
But you're saying we have...
That is our regulations. Yeah, they could, but they can say that we already, and he can countersign that we already have water and sewers.
Those services are provided by existing.
They're already provided. Yeah, they're already provided.
A state, yeah.
If they were building a new bathroom or whatever, then we would certify that they could tie it to existing, or into a sewer, or provide a septic or something like that if they needed to. But there's no new facilities being installed?
There's no new facilities being installed, however, the site is to be served by public water, by public sewers.
We just need, we just need a sign off saying...
That's right.
Yeah, just a signature saying we have...
Just a letter saying that there is available water.
By the town, right.
Right.
By Jim.
Well, yeah, you have to get it from him to include in your application pack.
Okay.
Which isn't a problem, huh?
No.
Okay.
No. I do have one other issue, the, you said that it's not a permanent structure. As part of this approval process, is it possible to move it 20 feet and get it off of the easement? Because right now, the rail system is sitting right on top of our water line.
So it's head off the jump.
I understand that, but the issue is, that is how all the water from the town gets to the top, well, this is important while you're...
Yeah, I agree, I just...
It's a conceptual, it's a conceptual thing, right, and I ask you guys to vote on this or anything, but...
I would say you can't move it off, I mean, there's no other place to put it, looking at it, you can't go close it to the bag and proper to the, looking up to the right.
We'll talk, we'll talk about it during the application.
Yeah, I was gonna say, after that, we accept it.
Exactly.
Can we, can we have some initial discussion on that, having this, here's the idea, is if we have to move it that far?
No, let's not get into that kind of discussion, because we haven't accepted the application yet.
Okay.
It's still premature for that kind of discussion, I don't want to get into that kind of detail. This is kind of a, I mean, the one thing I think we would require would be a letter from the owner of the easement, saying it's okay to put it on there, that would be a...
That's the town.
That's the town.
That's the town.
I mean, that would be another requirement that we could have posed on this.
Would that letter not be on the application?
It's probably the application.
Well, it's up to the selectmen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it on the agenda for the next meeting, I, I just...
Is it more of a note that that structure can't ever be permanent with a foundation type thing, so that it would never enter those waters?
That's up to the selectmen, we'll just date it up on the 23rd and...
I think the one thing that we can do as part of the application, is we can require a letter from the town, saying that it's okay to put it on, on their easement, because now we're still talking about the application. We don't get into too much detail on that. I hate to shut that up, but I think...
No, I understand, I'm fine with that. I just want it in the record that that discussion had, and it should be part of... I think it, they certainly, outside of this meeting, could approach the town and get them to actually produce that letter, or say it was an issue prior, you know, and submitted this part of the application.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, they don't have to, but they could.
We have the right to request any, any...
Right, you need additional submission.
That specified, so that would be one of the things that we...
So you might want to go talk to the town and, and tell them, hey, this is going on top of the easement, tell them what the issues are outside of this meeting, right, you know, but...
And what if we accept the application, I mean, get into that kind of discussion.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to short circuit, you know, if the information's provided, then it's provided, I mean, otherwise you gotta go get it.
The only thing is, it seems like it might be a bit of a controversy in that.
I'm not saying it's gonna be a controversy, I just want to make sure that it's addressed, because it's sitting right on top of that water, so...
Okay, my, I guess my point is, it's an issue that's open at this particular point, and the application doesn't really deal with it, and I'm wondering if the BBTS would want to withdraw the application until that might be...
No, 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 I think what Ray said, you know, you guys can require, like Bill said, do it upfront preemptive, they can come in on the 23rd to the selectmen's meeting, talk about it, and then they'll have an answer for you when they come in and ask.
So it's August 23rd?
No, 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 it's July 23rd is the selectmen's meeting, yeah, sorry.
Anything else missing that you can think of?
I think as far as an application is concerned, what we discussed, that would get them to the point where it's acceptable as an application. I think that there's enough information required, additional information required at this point, that I don't know if it should be accepted at this point.
Yes, the board feels.
I, I would agree. Right, Mark?
Do we need to vote on that, Mark?
No, you're not, you're not gonna vote to accept it as a plea, because it's not included.
Then, so just hang there and then vote?
Oh, you start giving us some more things as we worry, you think about especially...
Yeah, no, we certainly did...
Yeah, we'll talk about these, and I just want to make sure that it was part of it.
Yes.
So that you didn't get the call back.
Yes, it should be, I think...
Resolved before they come in and ask.
When is the August meeting?
So, we second February's date.
But I think it's safe to say that we will require that, that it's part of the easement.
You do what you...
14th.
Thank you.
And I would name it the 14th, right?
Again, we don't accept the application, we didn't open the public hearing.
Well, to prevent having to notice it again, I think if you would continue it to August...
Even if it is open?
I don't know, I don't know where you are, because we noticed, I don't know that... You noticed it on the possibility that it might happen today?
Yes.
I, I think we're gonna have to notice it again, I think, I think there's ways to notice it again.
Yeah, because there's no way for you to open it and then continue it, so we'll notice.
Yeah, there's no reason to open it.
And, and just so we're clear, the trampolines are not being created.
Right.
Right.
It's a different time.
So I may have some answers up here, because...
Well, but you would have to have a prior, yeah, as new business, yeah.
A timeframe if you want it included. Sorry, just a...
Before we, not that we've got you here, can we talk about the parking over here again, because selectmen talked about it at one point, and I guess this is that people continue to park and written some parking tickets, I understand? It's certainly not clear what the intention was, I mean, the drawing shows full parking places, but...
Yeah, we haven't signed them yet, so I don't know if you guys parked there or there today, but we started putting up some signs, that's the same thing I'm gonna do for those four parking spaces, to put the posts and sign, again, I'm not sure why they didn't do that, because this happened along the way too, that they put these nice signs up indicating, we're still gonna do some lines, and I said, can you guys please put the signs in the post up over there so we can identify some parking, because I know that's something that we gotta do, and, and they didn't do it, so I need to go back to the contractor, and that's one of, one of the things on the punch list they need to finish, so it's actually the last thing on the punch list. So, and, and that, identifying those parking spaces is the thing that we haven't done. You know, I think they're parking, I don't know, I didn't know people were getting ticketed, I...
Since tennis, the tennis, the fourth of July, it's, it's been better, the cars have stayed off to the side. Earlier in the year, during the month of June, it was an issue, and even when the selectmen were doing their drive around, we had folks pull in and just...
Well, one thing that happened when they fixed the lift and they did all this work here, this became like a highway, those people always...
No, this was a tennis court user that just...
I, I watched that happen yesterday.
It did happen yesterday.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if signs are gonna work, you know, is there any way you can stripe it to make it clear that there's only four spots?
We'd have to pave it. If you want to have a discussion, we can have a discussion, now, at the end of the day, we did some paving over it.
Can we put in some railroad ties or something like that, that will delineate?
Yeah, that would do it.
That'd do it, if, yeah. I'm not necessarily in favor of paving that automatically.
No, I'm not either, but I'm not sure if signs...
You could offer some other solution, I think that would be...
Not sure if signs are gonna do it either.
Well, I think, you know, I think...
That's the next step, and we said we were gonna do that, we need to, we need to follow up on doing that, and again, I, you know, great that we got some signs here, but I really, that was the thing, would you please put the sign, because that's the parking issue, which we're all sensitive to.
And I think too, that, you know, hearing that wetlands discussion, which I thought was fascinating, by the way, you know, having some places where it's not, you know, fully paved, is a good thing, so if we could use a combination of signs and railroad ties or something of that nature, I think we could make the case pretty clear visually.
You have some reserved parking on that side for Tom, and I forget whether...
To administration.
Okay. How about signage for those four spots, reserved?
Yes, you know, because some of it will be tennis center and some of it will be BBTS, so that is what the signs will be about.
Okay.
What will the sign say?
Yeah, what would we say with a sign, why would we, we reserve them for what?
Keep everybody else out primarily, but...
Yeah, so, you know, somebody who's going to the library can't park there, so it, you know...
Why not?
Because...
They can park in the parking lot.
Because that was the original, what we talked about.
I mean, I think identifying four parking spots and making it more, this is what it is, not five, so if there's an extra car there, the town has every right to come over and put a ticket on the car.
Okay.
Or if you want to give me some tickets, I'd be gone, I don't know, but I mean, I think that was the intention, and we want to follow that and try and, you know, we did a little work over there.
On some spots of those...
Once, once you identify the four spots, will there be additional land further towards the tennis court where people would park, or could park if it opened?
Park on the grass and park also.
I'm just wondering if there's a way that you have the four parking spots, and then there's some way of preventing other infringements.
Well, what if you put parking spot one, two, three, four, and then a no parking or a couple of no parking signs?
At the end, yeah.
You know, at the end, so that they know that there are four parking spaces, they're, they're identified clearly, and then you have no parking in this area that elsewhere, reserved area. And the problem is, it's, it's so wide with the grass and then the dirt, and I agree with Bill that paving, it's probably not the answer, we want to keep the drainage and all of that going, but, but it's so wide, people just drive in and stop. The, part of the original plan was to have rocks or some delineation, you said Jersey area, that's a road, that's a seat cut, but, but some sort of delineation between the grass and the parking so that they can see that it's a road, and it's an emergency...
Well, big, big rocks might be, might work better than no parking signs.
We could put some big rocks, that, you know, we spaced out some rocks on the property that we had to move, we could take a couple of them and put them at the end, my concern there is...
That would work better than... That would work better than signs.
My concern is accessing the back part of the property, you know, I know we have the fire lane with that tree there too, so if you put a rock there, you're not gonna get, you know.
We could put some chain in, you know, you know, three posts and some chain would do the same thing.
That's easy for emergency.
Yeah.
Put a split rail fence that ties in with your look here, you know, might also be a way to do it. Just something to delineate.
This is.
Okay, so if we sign those four spaces and we stop it at the end of the fourth space going this way, that would be acceptable to them?
No parking beyond this point, fire lane or anything like that, Chris can help you.
And we can move off that space, cause I'm sorry, it's taking so much of your time and then I have to bring, then, you know, let's get it right. But that would be something we can definitely do.
Well, I think it touches.
When they come and put the signs in, I could just have them put a, a split rail fence on that end and boom.
And, you know, right now, um, like we have, we have, we have to do that, but the tennis people are now parking on this side too. And, um, you know, they, they use our water. And like I, I'm, I'm listening, Terry, to what you said about we need to get some kind of a, a thing about what our existing utilities supply are for the box and rail. Why does the tennis center not have to, as it goes forward, try, you know, take these things off of us? You know, for example, right now, we're having an issue with our bathrooms in the training center, somebody's coming out today. But the load on these two bathrooms at this point in the season is mostly the tennis center. So why are we not, as a town, um, encouraging the tennis center to become self-sufficient in and of itself?
Because there's no permitting process, and the permitting process was done a long time ago, and I don't know what the arrangement was at the time, but there was, finish line was here, and this was a different place at the time that they were permitting.
And, yeah, and, and from our standpoint, this is a different place now because we have full year.
I don't know if the tennis center automatically has any grandfather rights to use these bathrooms, do they?
And right now, you know, now they want to.
I mean, I was thought that you intended this courtesy to them.
Yeah.
I think I would talk to the tennis center and say, hey, look, the volume and traffic is making this difficult, you should come up with a solution. Because we have, there have been people that suggested the tennis center, maybe they wanted to get together with the golf course in terms of citing water class. You know, and share, and, and their initial reaction is, eh, I don't, you know, I don't wanna be bothered. So I, I, I think you might wanna have that conversation with the tennis people.
And now the school is going on too, we have, you know, much more usage here, yeah.
And these aren't so change? You can't say you can have carte blanche usage during the summer. Then it's their problem to come up with a solution.
Well, there's a lot of issues with that relationship, not relationship, but the, what goes on, cause it's parking, it's, um, bathrooms, it's water, it's trash.
Right.
I mean, there's all, all those issues that were, were kinda used as, you know, their supplier of those things, which is fine, I mean, but I think as, you know, they need to become self-sufficient as we become self-sufficient.
And our internal programming has grown to a degree that, you know, it's, it's becoming mu- much more of an issue for us to maintain all those things with schools and camps here in the summer than it was, you know, a couple of years ago, literally.
But I think that's between the businesses, I don't think the town has any.
Well, I think we were just looking for your advice on how to approach it.
I think the only, the only venue that would be applicable would be if the tennis center was planning on expanding or making a change, make a new site plan review, then that could be addressed.
Then we can.
But I don't think we have any ability to aggressively go ahead, something like that.
But you've been very generous in letting them use this, and now it's, it's really costing you, it's backfiring on you, I mean, we've been talking about this parking.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna have a conversation with them, I would strongly suggest go over and explain to them again that as a courtesy, we're allowing parking over here for four cars. You need, you, they should put up a sign in their facility saying, you know, that, that this, there is parking for just four cars in that area. Any more than that, you, you have to go down the end of the road and park. It's their problem to go up and solution, they're parking.
I believe.
And, uh, and, and tell them, you ought to post that sign and tell them that the, the police are gonna take it because you're parking in a fire lane and it's illegal.
Until it's, until the parking spots are identified and a fence or something, I mean, I hear, and Bill, you probably too, were on a court a lot out there, and, I mean, I hear people just say, yeah, I've been parking there for thirty years, I don't care, I'm just gonna park there.
Right, until they're gonna get enough tickets and.
Well, no, that's what I mean, I mean, but we're coming now to this situation where you gotta identify the spots.
Well, there are a few people, I mean, I watched. That's the people that park on the road, they're gonna park on the road.
Yeah, well, then the town has to deal with that.
Then the town's gonna deal with it if they park.
And the truth of the matter is, I think, for the tennis center, um, for summer weekends or, or busy weeks, I don't think there's enough parking over by the golf course. So, I mean, it's a separate issue, there's nothing you can do about it, they can ride their bikes or walk, but.
They can park here, which is fine, and they can park at the dorm. When there's parking available, it's just, they have to be two feet away from where they're playing tennis.
Yeah, well, it's a thirty year, it's a thirty or forty year.
Tennis, you're running around or walking, that's the difference, all flash. But I mean, there's plenty of parking that we'll, we, we will help provide. But I, I do think once we finalize, finalize this parking space, the town needs to come and force when they're not parking where they should be, and it's not my employees or it's not my people. So I think we, we feel it all the time, but it's really another organization that's.
It's, it's training people, so after a few tickets or whatever, you know, they'll get the message.
Well, actually, what stopped it at the, at the conference center, not the conference center, at the sports center, with people parking on the road, was Bruce, Bruce Glass's car getting towed. That.
What?
Yeah.
His car. Well, I think he was just saying that he came in and asked, he said, you know, whose car is this, you gotta move it. And he's out playing tennis, so he didn't hear the announcement, and they physically towed his car. Since that happened, there hasn't been a single case of somebody parking on that road anymore, somehow that word got around.
You know, and if we were able to, to delimit some places for the tennis center, cause a lot of times they're here early and they're taking up, you know, like our prime spots. So, I mean, if we were able to take a set number of places and say, you know, complimentary parking for the tennis center. And, you know, have it be, this, these, these are your spots, and, you know, these are the ones over here, and these are some over here, and here's some in the dorm.
Just, just remember one thing, just like you, um, were nice enough to allow the people to use your facilities, and now you're growing and expanding, and it's an additional burden because you have more, uh, uh, in the needs of, uh, your own. If you start that, and then you build dorms or some, you know, just be careful what you start, because it always leads to something else. As far as identifying and saying that.
Cause I think as far as town's concerned, those four spots are your spots. You can put up private parking signs.
Well, yeah, that's why, I mean, I don't wanna designate tennis center, I mean, there would be parking spaces. If tennis people fill them up before I have a staff or parent go there, that's fine. Um, and that's who you're gonna probably use them mostly, especially in the summer. But I wouldn't, I, I definitely wanna own those spots, but I think as we do build more buildings, parking becomes a issue, so.
Yeah, we're gonna need more parking, because right now, people.
We can only build on parking lots, so.
If, you can do what you want, it's your, they're your spots, but, I mean, if this was my, if I was running this organization or something, I'd delineate those as for your purpose. Otherwise, again, you're allowing, you're allowing the tennis people and you're getting into that.
Yeah, because we, you know, and we're using, we were hoping to use those spots, um, for some of our older faculty members that, you know, this really can be a trek in, um, you know, or for any employees or people who are injured too.
That's why I say, I don't know why you're, I mean, it's nice that if somebody parks there and they're tennis and it's nothing going on, it's fine. But you gotta train people to stay away somehow.
You could put reserved for signs or something.
It's up to you.
We just need to get them marked.
Okay.
Identify four spaces, get them properly marked, and we'll enforce it.
Cause before you were here, I mean, this whole parking lot was just for anybody who went for cut, it was public parking, more or less. And I think you've just gotta claim, this is now your, cause once you build those dorms, you know, now you got hikers that think they can park here.
Well, the snow's not in lift, I mean, that has to be a learning burden too, people.
There's not that many for, they usually ride their bike or take a lift, so honestly, it's more the employees for that, um, that business, so there's a couple cars.
But that's about a bathroom, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, that, yeah, so we do provide the bathrooms for that operation too, so, and sometimes, like they had a big group in here yesterday, obviously they're using our facilities and anyway, it's fine, it is what it is.
And the bathrooms are blocked.
As long as the lift is there, that's just gonna be happening, so.
But eventually, you've gotta protect your school, your students.
Very good point, that's a very good point, because as, you know, as we go forward, you know, campus safety and being able to know who is on your campus is a very big issue.
Well, you run into a problem all the time of, of implied easement by use, and you gotta be careful of that. That if you let people keep using it, after a while, they're playing, you know, hey, I have a right to do that and easement.
Right, so you have to set your boundaries, this is where you don't.
You gotta be, you gotta be very clear.
You actually, actually have to charge, I think, too, if you don't, track some sort of fee, I think eventually.
Right.
Is that versus for that procedure?
Maybe you call that.
No, 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 if you don't.
Oh, okay. Okay.
They could wear these signs, wouldn't they be?
Okay.
Sure, you can park there, twenty-five dollars a day.
Or a yearly membership, you know, ten dollar yearly membership.
And they can sell those parking, wait, there's some money there.
Parking passes.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess, so we'll look forward to seeing you next month.
Okay, thank you.
And see, Terry's gonna leave at ten, so I'm gonna jump to review zoning regulations signs.
Okay, I'm gonna hand this out, let me just, in the course of sending these around. Let me just provide some background. And not, we, we had a selectmen's meeting yesterday, but the, the selectmen's meeting, two weeks before that, the selectmen went on a bus tour, looking at some of what we considered some of the potential, um, most, most important zoning violations, because the selectmen really are the zoning enforcement agency. So we went out on the tour, and a lot of what we were looking at that were potential issues involved signs. Not, not exclusively, but, uh, but involved signs, right? And the other issue that came up at the same meeting is that Terry came in asking for permission to move their real estate sign back to where it was previously located. Uh, because they're moving from the Silver Fox Inn back to Village Condominiums, and they asked, well, can we move the sign? So in the course of these two things, we got into a big discussion about signs and reading what the zoning ordinance actually said about signs. Let's start with Terry's, there's one thing that's very clear regarding Terry's application. And that is, the regulations quite clearly state there is no grandfathering when it comes to signs. So that if you change, move, alter, do anything, maintain, touch the sign, what you do must conform to the current regulations, alright? So then we got into, well, what do the regulations say about, can she have a sign? Because, uh, she want, that what they want is a sign on town property, the town right of way, adjacent to the entrance of Village Condom, that's what they're asking for. What's what they had at one time, and they're saying, can we move the sign back? So that led into a lengthy review and discussion around some of the regulations. And I started to make a list of some of the sign questions, Ray and I'll go over these, not so much that we try to answer them today, but these are ultimately questions I think the planning board is gonna have to answer. And then I, I'd be more than willing to volunteer to take a shot at rewriting the zoning regulations again to try to make sure they answer some of these questions, because they're pretty vague right now. I, I don't know how we would treat some of these, and let's, I'm gonna go into these, some of these are obvious. So right now, the regulations state that they apply to all signs. But they only provide information from then on in for real estate signs, new development signs, open house signs, and then temporary special events, banners, flags, and decorations, and business signs. So it covers those categories, gives some definition, but there are no rules that we could see in those regulations regarding special event signs. So for instance, if somebody wants, is gonna have a wedding, is it acceptable to put up a sign that says, you know, congratulations to the new couple, da, da, da? It says nothing, right? So I don't know. And likewise, if somebody's gonna hold a race and wants to put up a race sign, we don't have any rules other than it should not be ugly. I mean, basically, unless it says the sign should be ugly, but other than that, we don't say much. General information signs, if somebody wants to go plant on their property, a sign, stop, northern paths. I don't know, we don't say anything. So my interpretation therefore would be in the absence that they'll all be allowed. Uh, but the question that, to the point of Russell, is do we wanna put some restrictions on some of these things?
I guess, I guess we're, we're jumping to my mind, these special event signs, temporary signs, that they will be up for a day or a weekend.
Yeah, they go up all the time. Well, the, the, what if the selectmen approve them? But in actually reading the regulations, there's no rules governing them. I'm not sure that, that if you read the regulations, that a lot of people like, take like the Gordon conferences, is that a business sign or a special event sign? If it's a business sign, it's probably illegal. If it's a special event sign, I don't know if it's legal on town property, you know, on the right of way. So we need some help in this area in terms of some guidance going forward. Do we wanna restrict these things or not restrict them? Now, political signs and like statement, if somebody wanted to put a statement up, you know, John three sixteen, you know, religion, we're properly in really murky area trying to say you can't do that. But other signs, we might be able to, uh, to, to, to put some guidance, so that's one area. The one section that we particularly struggle with is, there's a section on rules for businesses for creating off-premises signs. Now, on-premise meaning is defined as on your lot. So, but there's no definition of what off-premise means. So that if Terry, for instance, and I'm just making a real example, if she wanted to go to the sports center and rent their property, you know, lease a property to put up a sign, is that on-premise or off-premise, I would have no clue from where the regulations are written. Uh, and could she therefore, you know, you know, put a sign there that basically points to where she wants to go, alright? So that's one issue that we're gonna have to figure with. It talks about that if you're in a business, not in a business complex, you are allowed to list your business name on shared directional signs at the ma- the nearest major intersection. So what is a major intersection? Is the intersection of the Village driveway and Route forty-nine a major intersection? I don't know. There's no definition at all of what constitutes a major intersection. And, uh, once we can get a definition, then you get into the question of if there's no shared directional, existing shared directional sign, can we create one? You know, um, I, I don't know, the regulations don't seem to say. Uh, if you're part of a business complex, you are not allowed, I find this interesting, to list the business name. You, you're supposed to have a sign that says there's an amenity over there, like there's shopping, there's restaurants. But you couldn't say there is a lantern restaurant, right? It's the way the regulations read right now. But what is a business complex? Uh, when, when, if, if the, if Village Rank. Uh, when, when, if, if the, if Village ranks space to two businesses, is that a business complex now? Or is it a, or is it a standalone business in someone else's space? I don't know. And I think we need some clarity around that. There are statements in here that businesses within a complex may have signs as allowed by the landlord within the complex. Now, it's under the off-premise section, off-premise sign section, not the on-premise sign section. So does that mean that if you get permission from the landlord, you can go put a sign off-premise without getting town permission to do it? I don't know. And I think it's just in the wrong place and we, we need to fix it. Uh, but even for on-premise signs, is it the landlord then that determines what's appropriate or us? And, uh, it's...
That was town square, that's why it was written.
I think that's, I think it was written that way.
It's in the wrong place.
We need to fix it.
That particular law, but I think Phil's right. We need to just...
We need to clarify. And this one did come up, the last one. A new development sign may be erected from the approval of the project till the first certificate of occupancy is issued. Great B. They still got a sign up, and then we told them, you gotta take the sign down. You got the building committed. They're saying, you're, that's, I understand, but the regulation doesn't make any sense. I mean, they still got a unit for sale, and they're saying, they'd like to come in and argue that, you know, it ought to be some criteria, not the first certificate of occupancy, but maybe fifty percent or, you know, a hundred percent, you know. They're saying it should be something other than the first certificate of occupancy. And they want to have a hearing on it, because we're, tell them, they gotta get all these signs down. And they're saying, you're gonna kill me.
Is that any different, though, from the, if I wanted to sell my house, my thing for sale?
No, and that's the debate, that's the issue. That's the issue. And, uh, like, for instance, if you'll notice, she's got a new development sign on two building lots.
Yeah.
Well, why, how is that different than a for-sale sign?
Yeah. We had to notice that when we were walking, you said something about...
You know?
Yeah, well, I...
But he hasn't gotten a CO for the building. So I, I only list these, and, and sometimes, some meeting, we need to, to, to go through these and debate them a little bit. As I said, I'd be more than willing to try to rewrite the regulations if we can get some guidance on what we would like to do.
Yeah, I know I had wrestle with some of these, because when that, when the real estate sign was initially moved, um, I had somehow ended up as a sole committee member on that side. And we just looked at wrestling the business signs at that point, because that was what was critical. But I saw at the time that it was insanely, and, and plus, a lot of towns, you know, they have their building permit applications online. And, and not building signs, sorry, permit applications on, so it's all very clear, and we're definitely missing in that as well.
Because a couple of years ago, at the selectmen's request, we looked at, and rewrote the signs.
Right. And it does make clear right now that you can grandfather. But there's still some areas in here, whereas I read them, were, I'm not sure how to interpret them.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, yeah.
And, and, and I'm struggling with, okay. Because we got into this question of, is, is the intersection of Village Driveway and Route 49 a major intersection? Because if you determined it was, then they would be allowed to put a sign over on the town property now. My interpret, our interpretation right now is that ain't a major intersection, but it's not clear.
And that was a definite discussion that planning board was to word it that way, so that condo driveways would not be...
Right. And I, I think we should be very specific as to, you know, I, there probably aren't that many of them that we couldn't list.
Are you gonna provide us with all thicker notebooks so this, your regulations will fit in here?
No, I don't think it has to actually be any longer than it is now. We just need to include some definitions and, and where it was developed, and it's just a couple of items that have to move. And, uh, and then we'll, we'll be all right.
Well, it could certainly be. I mean, in the little research that I had time to do, ours was definitely the briefest that I saw anywhere, even looking at towns of comparable sizes, and especially resort towns. Um, so it could easily double and still not come close to...
I mean, I think the interesting question is, is we clearly don't want town full of signs. That's the intent. So if somebody wants the plant stopped, northerly pass, or they want, are we gonna allow that?
Can we stop? That's another discussion we had before was...
Well, we oughta, we oughta decide if we want to try to allow those things, and then we'll see. Can we stop them? Yeah, well, that's, but, you know.
We did, we did.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I don't know.
Maybe you just...
Well, you could argue that they're real estate, for sale signs.
That's how we end it out.
Right. We say they're not.
And we'd be happy to join in.
Yeah, okay, good.
As long as it's not a committee of one again, I'm happy.
Well, it's a committee too, right after that.
Sure, you can find someone else.
So we'll need some time, and it's not much on the agenda, to try to at least talk through some of these issues and provide some direction. Because I don't know, in some cases, what to try to write.
Exactly.
I would suggest that we start talking about it in, in September.
Okay.
Because, you know, it takes time to get it on.
Yes, it does.
To some extent. Now, I don't know, do you recommend anything be done before September with a committee?
No, I, well, I, I'd like to get some sense of the board about some key issues. I, I think there, I think it is possible to say, to say that basically, our intent with off-premise signs was strictly limited to providing directions as to how to get to where you want to go. That, that's the purpose of off-premise signs, period.
Right.
They're not to advertise, they're not to announce your business, because you look at the Roper Real Estate, their argument is, is that they want a sign that's kind of advertising their business, because the other real estate guy can do it, because it's on his property. And I'm saying, well, I think we ought to say, no, you know, that's your problem.
Well, they put it on your premise, though. They could have that type of sign.
They could. They absolutely could talk Village into allowing them to put a sign on Village's property. That's not the issue. They're arguing that I have a right to do it on the, on, on the off-premise sign. You know, off-premise, and I'm saying, no, that, that's not the intent of those signs. And, and I think we ought to be very clear that even on weddings and stuff like that, the only purpose of those signs is to get you to the amenity. You can't, remember, we had these guys that came from, um, some Christian association, and they had, and they put fifteen signs down, you know, announcing worry, well, that was not how to get to the amenity.
But that, that's a good point.
Is that approved?
No, 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 they just stopped it. That's, that's another...
But it brings up an issue, though, and that, that's exactly what you've got to be careful of, because right now, you're, you're talking about whether you should allow this on an off-site, you know, premise, and just directions of what... I think it's the sheer number of signs that could be against the, the premises, which says, you know, it doesn't, you don't want it to be distracting.
Right.
So I think that in writing or rewriting these regulations, somehow, the number of signs that could possibly be set up, even if you regulated what you could put up and where you could put up, if everybody decided to put a sign up, it would just be a sign heaven.
And, right, and that's one of our concerns.
And it would not, it would be against the actual statement of purpose and intent that's at the beginning of the, the whole regulation. So I think that that has to be addressed.
And remember those big red signs with the arrows and people stopping in the roads and trying to find, okay, Golden Eagle that way? You know, we, right now, I was telling the board yesterday, that's what we're trying to, I mean, that's what the regulations, if you follow this directional thing at the major intersections, we're going right back to that type of system. And is that really what we, how we want to do?
It may be the lesser of several evils.
But it may be, so, but we got to be very clear on that.
Because if you took each one of those signs and spread it out a hundred feet, you know, you'd have signs all the way around.
You wouldn't see the mountains.
Yeah.
Didn't we talk, at one point in time, some kind of an informational area?
Love to.
You know, people go...
A little kiosk with a map.
Yeah, and they could see the map. But you'd need room for a couple of cars to park or whatever, but, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, one suggestion, and it, there may be some sense, is that all of these signs that are on right-of-ways should become property of town. Uh, it's not clear right now. They're not all the property of the town, some of these are properties of the enemies. And that way, we could say, you know, we've got directional signs at five major intersections in town. That's it. You, you'd like to get something on one of those signs, we'll work with you, right? But other than that, you can't have one, period. So even for a wedding, you know, you'd have to, you'd have to put a temporary thing on one of those sign places, and you cannot have down the road. But that may make no sense, because then, you know, then, then people, you know, driving down, trying to find a wedding, and they don't know where to turn.
Especially when it's off the arbor.
Yeah, right.
Well, you would think, you would think there's some, I mean, in case of a wedding or a, a one-time event, you would think that the people of the organization would send information out to the people that are coming in to participate.
Well, they do, but the hundred and fifty people, you know, sixty percent read it, and the other forty percent don't read it, and they wander into the, do you know of a wedding tower, where it would be? And I say, okay, here's the map, here's the sign, you know, it's the nature of the beast of a group of people.
And we had somebody on Triple I Road ask us the other day where the fair was, the other last week. Is there a, a, a fair going on around here?
But it's, it's by my experience that you could have a sign that's twenty foot by twenty foot, and say, fair.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll work with them. Start talking about it.
Yeah.
And it really makes sense to bring, so like, at the time, when I was working on it, I talked to Tom Gross, because at the time, he was the head of valley operations, and he had done the most recent signs. And I looked through the selectmen's records, and his name kept showing up. So maybe bring in, you know, a member to the business community to, because, you know, a real estate committee, you know, some, some outside people to get feedback.
So that was our invention, was trying to cope with signs.
Is it resolved?
Now, time being, I believe, yes, the, um, well, other than, uh, Bob Wild were, were encouraging, and he goes, you know, he's still upset, so he wants to go, we think he wants to go to the ZBA, but does not formally apply to do it. Uh, Roper Real Estate was gonna go to the ZBA, but is now withdrawn. Uh, I, I, first of all, the, the requirements to go to the ZBA, because we cannot, the, selectmen do not grant exceptions to zoning. We simply enforce the zoning. And you gotta pay, what is it, two hundred and fifty bucks?
Two hundred.
Two hundred and fifty bucks to apply to the ZBA. So I think that stops a number of people, like, oh, is this a two hundred and fifty dollar problem? I don't know. So I don't know what they're gonna do. I think they're gonna leave the sign where it is for the time of.
Okay. Uh, let's see. We did an all-country council survey. We went out. So we want to do pedestrian village update.
Pedestrian village update.
Yeah, I, um, couple things. The survey came to an end right around, extended it out a week in June. Uh, I think we ended up with about six hundred replies, so it was better to have that push at the end, which helped. There, and we're, we're in the midst of getting together all that information. I'd asked Mark King to try to get a synopsis for today, and last night, it got about fifty pages. So I didn't quite have a chance to digest it. His suggestion was that perhaps, um, he could do a presentation later this month to the board. Um, I don't know if it's possible for us all to wrangle a date that would work out. I know we need to try to get the subcommittee together, but, again, they're not here. So, um, it's the May meeting, it's summer, you know, we're all going in five different directions, so. If we could figure out a time, if everyone's interested, to get together and just have a casual recap, and Mark could probably be here either, I don't think I'm in person or via Skype, just to really hash through all the information. Because, uh, it's not just the survey, well, it is the survey results, as well as the initial work that PHB had done both back in February and again during the summer. Kind of assessing everything from sidewalks to parking and every signage, and everything else that we had asked. So there's a lot of information that's all of a sudden, boom, here, and we just need to kind of get it out there in a more digestible way for all of us. We also want to get an article together for the Wigwag. Coming up in August, there will be a second survey that's meant to address the, um, the opportunities that PHB and SE Group see in result, you know, they've kind of sussed out issues, and now they're addressing the opportunities, where it could go next. And that's what the next survey would be addressing. Also in August, um, we'd like to orchestrate a community meeting, we're talking about August twenty-second, it's a Friday evening. And what's been kicked around right now is to maybe like a community picnic, you know, offer a little bit of food. Um, I've spoken with, with Sean Stout, Tom Gross, briefly about possibly being able to help us out with, with providing some food. It would be a bit of a, a budget impact, we just don't feel right asking for a planned out donation to feed however many people would happen to show up. I guess SE Group had done something similar in Vermont, a community picnic, of course, they had major grocery stores to help donate and kind of made that easier for them. So August twenty-second, sort of the date, and the exact activity, I guess, has yet to be exactly firmly set out. We like the picnic idea, if we can just make it a reality, work within the budget, I don't know if anyone else has any ideas.
Weather permitting?
Well, we've had a backup space, I talked to Rachel, the rec department would be available for a backup rain location.
We would budget the deck enough.
That, um, ninety thousand that the town given us, and technically with SE Group, we do have some, some slush, what we had agreed to was eighty-four thousand, so we do have, you know, an extra little bit in there. Also, and I don't know, Mark, if you've really looked in detail, I know there's been...
We have about fifty-five hundred balance from the contract, because we also did some printing and some other stuff.
Right.
Uh, out of the six thousand, so we have about fifty-five hundred left.
Right. And when we let, when we spoke in June, uh, Mark King said we're running a little below budget for at that point, but, I mean, we're still early on, so, yeah.
Who do you think this would cost?
I honestly have no idea. I think we would have to sit down, and it's hard, again, it's July, everyone's running all over the place. I had to sit down with Sean, and maybe Mike O'Brien, and Tom, and really see. You know, immediately, both of them said, oh, let's do some grilling, let's get some burgers, and, you know, it, there's a lot of enthusiasm. But that was in June. And, you know, the reality of working all summer and finally getting there. Um, but I'd like to sit down and talk with them before the end of the month, and definitely get that.
I am gonna ask, because there's lots of people talking about ninety thousand dollars, it's a lot of money to spend on a survey. What's it gonna look like if we spend it on a picnic?
Sure.
You've got to be able to answer that kind of a question.
And that's why we want to get some board feedback as well. I mean, we're better off just having a meeting and just headlining it as a place to find out about the survey. Maybe we would just get more people who are directly interested in it, and not just there to go on some free food. But it's kind of up to...
But you get more people then.
We...
Right, we want volumes.
Have you done this for the master plan and, and other things that...
We paid for some of them.
Yeah, we've paid for...
Maybe we'll separate the two, we'll talk about that. Don't take it out, don't take it out of your funds.
Okay.
But we'll figure out some of them.
Are there other planning board funds that you have as a board, that are in the operations?
Per se, we, that might be better.
Okay.
But you're gonna encourage people to participate?
Yeah, right, no, exactly. Yeah, right, no, exactly, right.
And we've done it before.
Right.
And what's your time for, when you want to go?
August twenty-second. It's a Friday. It's right, it's the evening before the Craft Brews race, that five K race. So our outdoor location, we can use Patrick's field because they're setting up, so we're thinking perhaps, and I thought Dr. Bill can't install, but perhaps next to that arena, that land over there. So we have the bathroom nearby. And again, rain location would be the rec department.
They did the ground survey, not really a full survey, but they did a kind of an accounting of what was in the valley. Have they started, did they kind of have a plan or anything like that?
Oh, a plan, I'm not sure. They, I think, oh, I apologize again, I didn't hash through all the pages as carefully as I could have with them coming in late. But they definitely had everything laid out. I'm not sure that there's much of a plan yet or the opportunities yet.
Is that something that could be emailed out to the members?
The full, what he had sent me, I would imagine so, yeah. But I think it would be helpful if in conjunction with that, we'd have Mark talk to us about it.
Oh, yeah, I was just thinking, you sent it out, it could be easily emailed.
I would think so, so.
It'd be nice to get it, but you have to read it and get an overview and then we have questions or whatever, we'll get them answered at that.
Yeah, I can do that, or when I got to Sharon, she can send everybody. And, but if we wanted to talk about perhaps a date later in the month, I don't know, the week of the twentieth or the week after that? If that would work for people.
Well, August twenty-second actually sounds like a good date.
Oh, no, I mean July for talking about.
They're talking about for, meeting for us.
Yeah, just wants to talk about this initial information that's come across.
To have them come in and present where they are so far in one direction.
Right, either come in and do a voice.
I think that's a good idea, I mean.
Yeah, if there's a date that would work for the majority of people.
You have the seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and the thirty-first, if you stick with the Thursday. Maybe the twenty-fourth.
All those dates would work for me.
I would, I would suggest just keeping it on the Thursday.
Yeah, just stick with the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. Twenty-fourth, and whoever can come, can come.
Yeah, okay. I'll make sure that works with Mark and let everyone know.
We will post a meeting immediately, that way people know about it.
Eight AM again?
Well, I.
Let me, I think, let me still check with Mark and make sure this comes.
We'll technically schedule it for eight AM. Sharon will just do a written notice, right?
Okay. And I'll definitely let you know. I guess he's out of the office today, but we'll be replying to emails. So I would think by the end of the day, we should know if that works for that team.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we normally do.
Yeah, and then we can go over at least what's come in so far, if we have any questions, if the board can help guide us to where we want to go.
Yeah.
Next.
And what's gonna be the, on the.
And that's the twenty-fourth, ten forty-fourth of July, yeah.
On the second survey, what's, what's gonna be the gist of that?
I'm still looking for some more clarification from Mark on that, but the way it was initially discussed was that they would come up with various possibilities, you know, given what they gleaned from the initial interviews and surveys. What type, you know, if we were to do this, would you prefer to see A, B, or C, you know? That type of, you know, what people would envision would be a good opportunity for change, given that, that this is an issue. But, yeah, that survey is something we have to definitely get cracking on.
Because we had some specifics that we'd kind of like to get out of this survey. And we want to make sure that those kind of questions get answered, like the gondola and.
Absolutely.
Other specifics that we're looking for guidance. Good. July twenty-fourth, the date in?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on that?
I don't think I had it.
Okay, now for the fun, the North Country Council survey. Has anybody made a shot of filling this up, you want me?
No.
No.
That was something about emergency stuff, right? Doesn't, they sent control businesses, I started it and then I stopped.
I think as far as I got was the name of the town. I was pretty, pretty good with that. And then I kind of got.
I don't think I'm qualified to answer this stuff.
I know, that's kind of the way I felt too. That's why.
Who am I to answer this stuff?
I stopped it.
I think Mark should answer it.
Think Mark should answer it?
I think Mark should. You know, you can't just pick out an individual and have them answer the questions for the community.
What are you gonna fill out this survey? That we got penalized or something? What was that?
No, we pay money to, so, we pay our dues.
I guess I wanted to do it easier for them to get those questions, raise questions for the board.
We, we have actually answered some of these questions. Number two, we have a hazard mitigation plan that lists out and prioritizes that we worked on for several months to develop with the ski area public safety department. Everybody was involved. Number three, we have a CIP that it would be easy to answer that question. You know, there are some that are kind of subjective, but there's some that are just factual that we could fill in. So, however you want.
Which ones would you like help with?
Well, number four, you're doing through the pedestrian project, right? Villages and downtowns, isn't that kind of the theme? Well. Part A is a simple answer, we'd do that. Part B is kind of a pedestrian project. Part C would be a pedestrian project. E is non-political. You'd have to answer number five and prioritize them from the planning boards standpoint. Six, seven. And then eight's not. So six and seven, five, six, and seven would be questions. For.
Okay, so, well, why don't we go down to five? Sign priority. Energy production, planning for wind, biomass, hydro, solar, high, moderate, low. Should not work on this. Oh, I guess it's for them.
Right, you're, you're providing them with guidance.
Does that mean for them to look into ways of producing energy, or does that mean looking into ways of regulating these types of energies? Do you have any idea?
Well, it's, it's, should that be something that the regional planning commission deals with? Is the way that I read it. If it was in the context of, of helping, you know, helping towns develop capabilities in those areas, it'd be very helpful. If it would be in the area of writing regulations to restrict the development of those things, it would not be helpful at all.
Yeah, just kind of curious, what, what it means? Do you put a high priority in energy production, example, planning for wind, biomass, hydro, and solar? Now, do you mean planning in the terms of the town planning board saying, "We've got to make sure that this comes in on a reasonable basis and so forth?" Or does it mean planning to have solar, wind, and so forth?
I mean, if it covers the northern pass.
I'm assuming that question was there relative to northern pass.
I would too.
You know?
Which would be on a regulatory basis.
And they're on regional planning, right? I, I, I don't think the town has any interest in participating in a regional initiative to develop these things. We may have an interest in a town expanding our solar capabilities, being able to produce solar power. Seems to, every time you look at it, seems to get a little more attractive.
Well, I think it would be a high priority to plan for the development of planning, you know, wind, biomass, and so forth behind the coming in, but I don't think it's a good idea, a high priority to encourage it as a town.
Yeah, I don't think that they're asking to go out and be a
Promoter.
An advocate for it necessarily, but planning for it and helping towns plan for it.
I think it's a good idea to plan for it.
Then I would think that that would be where a regional planning commission should be helping us with. And it is something that almost all of our communities are facing, especially with northern pass and the wind farms and everything else. So having them help us plan for it would.
I would suggest moderate. I think that's a good response.
I think moderate works for them.
Okay, moderate. Taking notes?
Yes.
Energy efficiency, same thing?
On a, on a regional planning basis for energy efficiency, I, I would say it's relatively low. Do we have an, personally, do we have an interest in it? Yeah, but it seems to me you've got to do it at this level. Not at a regional level.
Okay. We'll put low on it, or should not, think of.
Well, low.
Should not, okay, low.
I'd say.
Access to transportation.
Well.
Here that needs our own vehicles, right?
What areas would mean, would it be interested in a regional system that would help get people here easier? In which case I would think that would be high, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
High, okay. We're going high.
We, we want a regional transportation system.
Yeah. Safe and affordable housing choices.
Safe and affordable housing for who?
Choices.
Safe and affordable.
Yeah, how do you, how do you deal with that?
I think we have a low interest in that.
Okay.
That's been run by us several times.
Low. Attracting businesses that pay livable wages. Because we're, we're.
How about keep the ones that we have?
Yeah, that pay living wages.
Did Obama say this?
I think we should.
Um, I think it's low for us.
Okay, improve high-speed internet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's high.
It's got to be high. Protect water quality.
High.
Yeah. Good.
Long-range planning for school districts.
Well, I, I, I think it would be moderate.
No, unfortunately.
Sharing municipal services and purchases.
You would mean moderate, so maybe sharing like a friend person or, right, is that what they're meaning?
Yeah, I think there are some cases where it might work, but, you know, I'm not sure that the police and fire arrangements, you know, would work for us, but.
Well, they are mutually, I mean, they have mutually.
No, but I mean, literally to combine them.
Oh, sure, yeah, definitely, we don't, yeah. But this would be, yeah, mutually agreements.
Yeah, we can, they can go to the Floyd and have them buy a new flat truck.
So I heard. Cherry's working on that.
I heard a moderate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Moderate.
Low.
Regional recreation resources such as trail systems.
I, I, I would think we have a high interest.
High, I think, yeah. Yeah, I would. Childcare, early childhood education.
Um. I, oh, we already provide early childhood education.
I think in preschool.
And, and daycare.
Right.
For younger kids, I think is what they're talking about there.
Do we say high on that?
Moderate.
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 Okay, moderate. Local foods, agricultural land.
No.
No, you don't have it.
No, see, I would say.
What's that?
I would have said moderate on that.
You can turn back, it's good into a front of the sun.
You can make fun of that.
They have a capital for growing marijuana.
Right next to casinos.
Cornfield.
So we got a low and a moderate, whatever.
I encourage local food stands and all, I think that's good.
Moderate?
Wait.
What?
For the local foods and agriculture.
Well, we do go to farmers' market.
Is that a moderate?
For me, it's a moderate, you guys don't care.
Moderate, yeah. No, anybody who cares gets it. I didn't say that. Emergency preparedness, acid mitigation, that's gonna be high. Especially for us, the town at the end of the road. Fostering civic participation, encouraged youth, that's gonna be high. Solid waste planning.
High. Oh, soft, solid waste, yeah.
Solid waste, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Training and guidance for planning boards.
Slow.
Well, you learn how to call.
Got to be at least moderate, right?
Yeah.
Let's say moderate. Other.
Other?
Shouldn't work, other.
Yeah.
We have no other. Did you say six and seven too?
Six and seven.
What's six? Human Services reported that nearly forty-six was third good. Overweight, obese, childhood obesity, obesity.
Health issues.
What did I want here? Plan this nationwide, are becoming more encouraged in health issues. Would you support North Country Council becoming more involved with other organizations to work towards a regional-wide strategy to improve the health of North Country residents?
Yes, and they want to get it to work out.
That was too hard for. What comes to mind first when you hear the word community?
I think you can fill the rest of this.
Yeah, yeah. Please take off the age category.
Don't worry about that, I'll take care of that. I'll take care of three and numbers up.
Take off the age category, forty-one is the median age for the state. Are we all up forty-one or up forty-one together?
I, I don't know, I guess in we're above the median age.
Oh, yeah.
This census is for, we're in the high fifties, low sixties.
Okay, you're welcome.
Got it.
Wow. Privilege in the floor, Tom?
Nothing's there.
Ray, I have one more question for Mark. Are you going to find out from town attorney and having people around accepting the regulations that you're?
Yes, I do have that, and I do.
Yes, I do have that, and I did not bring it with me, but I, while waiting, maybe I do have it. Yes, he, he did respond. Um, and I left it in my, in my office, I mean, no, here it is. Did that.
Well, he's sending it out, just for general information, the water mine is now under construction. We beat the bat.
We beat the bat, that's right.
And so that's moving right along.
What are you talking about?
There's a, there's a rumor that, that the, that's the Forest Service is looking at, at declaring the white nose, the bat that's got the white-nose disease an endangered species. And if they did, this is considered to be prime habitat. So it could stop a lot of projects in the track. But it's just a rumor, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Interesting, would it affect the development of this?
Yeah, absolutely, it would affect, it could, anything on Forest Service land, it'd probably get on a big hold.
What's the bird that's up on the mountain that keeps holding them up?
No, that, that's another bird, this is the bat.
The bats are becoming a roach's shadow of birds.
The bats are dying, they're, we're down to less than ten, less than ten percent of the population.
But there's some kind of bird up there, it's, uh.
Yeah, there was, talk about.
But the bats are dying.
The green peaches or something, is that?
The bird, um, nests in the White Mountains here.
Yeah, I think it's the bitnell strush.
Yeah, that's it, it's bitnell strush, and they summer, you know, they winter in Haiti, I guess, in Dominican Republic.
I haven't seen, I, I actually saw one of those a few years ago.
Yeah, well, they, they, because they have such small territories, the territories are getting chewed up, especially down in the winter.
That's, uh, but anyway, the water line is going in, they are digging away out there.
Well, the bats are.
Well, cutting down trees anyway. Went in down, right, cut down trees.
Must be the brown-nosed bat.
It is, it's the brown-nosed bat they're worried about.
Okay, so, so the question that I ask town council, is there any specific legal process that we have to follow to accept or implement the wetlands delineation project report? Um, we have two options. Uh, either designate wetlands as prime, which is what Harry was talking about, and then enjoy the protections of the state statutes for prime wetlands. So you can either adopt the state definition of prime wetlands, which I don't think we have any, or we can take any definition of our own and call it a prime wetlands, and then it would fall under the same statute. But that means that town meeting would have to approve that definition that you guys come up with of a prime wetlands. Or, number two, we can create an overlay to the zoning districts specific to wetlands and adopt it and make it part of our zoning, um, map. And then adopt, uh, regulations for what can and cannot happen within those overlays. So those are the two options. Um, so the, the zoning overlay district, which would be called the wetlands district, would define the wetlands, prohibit or, and/or restrict development in the wetlands, and a buffer, if you want to make that a buffer. Um, and then three, require that buildable lots require a certain percentage of non-wetland property, although this could be in the site plan subdivision rings instead. Um, but the master plan needs to be updated and include a chapter on wetlands now that we have the report integrated into the master plan first, and then build the regulations off of that, is what he recommends. And the, what the master plan, of course, is your purview.
Yeah, it's just made of public hearing, right?
Public hearing, we'll, we'll announce it, hold a public hearing, and then you can.
Wouldn't that, that second option give us the ability to define what we want ourselves and control it?
Well, I think both options allow you to define, it's just whether or not you want to call something a prime wetlands because that brings along with it the state statutes. So you, you, the enforcement on a prime wetlands is at the state level. If you just adopt wetlands overlay, then you can define what can and can't happen in those wetlands and go from there.
I would certainly be much more in favor of keeping it simple, I think it's keeping it more simple that way. But then, as things change over time, though, that overlay, you know, five years and ten years from now will have to be changed.
Right. Uh, and I think that for simplicity's sake, if you define something as a prime wetlands, then you will know exactly what can and cannot happen. Problem is, you don't control any changes that legislature makes to that.
Right.
And I don't know if you can undo, I would have to ask him further, I don't know if you can undo prime wetlands once you have.
Does the state have a definition of what a prime, if you have in your mind what a prime wetland is, have we read that?
I have not read it, I, I have the statute.
We should get that, I doubt very much if we have anything that would meet their definition.
Not even close.
Not even close.
So, so that's why I'm, I'm reading towards not adopting that.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, for the state statute, it's a size thing, but you can call a smaller wetlands a prime wetland. It's what development can and can't happen in that area once you call it a prime wetland.
Again, because of the size of the wetlands we have, and the complexity of the drainage systems, it seems that for our purposes, it would be better to, I, um, adopt the overlay and, and regulations like a buffer zone applicable to that overlay, and keep, you know, and try to focus on what we actually can control locally.
I agree with you. At least you'd be within our control as, as the town grows and moves forward.
Yeah, I'd be particularly wary about getting into something that you can't get out of later on.
Exactly.
Right.
And for a few things, we could keep local in there.
As far as the master plan goes, we can just make that, write that chapter. So we could do that anytime. Is there any advantage of doing it early?
Well, if you're going to propose any changes to the zoning ordinance or the zoning map, you should probably have the master plan updated because that's supposed to be the basis.
That's what I'm.
For zoning ordinance, so I think you should do it sooner rather than later.
That's kind of what I'm leaning towards, so can we put that on the agenda for next month?
For August?
Yeah. Because we only be accepting it.
Hearing and accepting it, and making it, calling it chapter, whatever, on the master plan.
Can we, on the same subject, and I know I spoke to Sharon yesterday, I guess we can't get a digital copy of the wetlands map, but can we get a, can a planning board members get a, or not like that, something that can refer to periodically, as opposed to going to the talking?
I thought we must hours to get a digital copy.
We, we are supposed to, we'll, we'll check with her and find out, because we are supposed to get a digital copy.
Okay.
Um, should we invite the conservation commission officially to attend that meeting that's going to be on the agenda?
Sure. Yeah, put it on next month again. You have a meeting coming up next week?
Um, it's actually two, it's a week from next month, so it's two weeks.
So you'll take care of that, you're just letting that know. Okay.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
A second. Too afternoon. You're a little.
This thing happened by accident.